Oh, yeah. Is this? I saw that with honor. There's a really good topic study. Uh, our coffee. Hot shot hand. I'll be on the door with you. Careful.
It's not that simple. You can say it was taken.
We were right there. That's good. I don't know. When we ask for 24 cents a gallon. 44 cents a gallon. You can put a buck in to go. So 40 hours, something all the make it seem like.
How you doing?
Good.
I need to thank you. I believe we can help. Will is asking for Park acreage. And then Park acreage. For development. Hi. I'm not for you the latest.
Yeah.
I'm I'm.
No time for this week. This year's.
She's asking for miles.
Yes. Very busy. Monday, Tuesday. It started real high on Monday, a little bit Tuesday and Wednesday. Thursday was hard.
Well, I'll forward it to you. I just.
Guys, we're by neighbor's house.
Well, I'll forward it to you. I could just like that latest.
You took her a dog to. Oh. Overdied. Oh, yeah. You gotta take your medication.
More noisy.
Filled up by Nick Therese.
I know.
I sense you know. I've never heard.
I I try.
That's Sunday. Never know. I had no electricity for the whole day. Addison was doing some kind of workaround.
Oh, my way. I know. I know.
So I had no. Couldn't emails and Facebook. No, I see. I love. Luckily, it was on that. Still. Two. I mean, ever since. Because I've never had no power. Well, yeah.
But like you're here today. It's not like my cell. It's true.
I use a short. It better be.
That's even the ice.
This was a. Music.
You should put.
There was 20 years. And then that ever happened. But it really became obvious to me. I mean, I wanted to do something. Build a more service.
How about you?
I can explain it. All right. Yeah. Well, she did. Got hired by the city. Really didn't like.
What policy she part? Sure.
Because it's too hot outside.
Oh, yeah.
Did you get the text? I sent you with the pictures.
Well, I don't.
Uh, I sent these pictures and.
See. See.
Same email.
Also.
Because I kept a couple. I thought you might.
Thank you.
My name is Mindy Park. I want to share with you my journey, one that has challenged me, transferred me, and ultimately strengthened me in any way I never imagined. I'm a singer, a dancer, a skater, a model, a business owner, but above all, I'm a mother. These roles define me, fuel my passion, and give my life purpose. But August 14, 2023, I face a sudden and unexpected change. I suffer a stroke, a hemorrhagic stroke, which caused a brain bleed. It was a moment that stopped me in my tracks. Suddenly, the things I love, performing on stage, moving gracefully on rink, expressed freely in front of camera, and danced to the most funky beats, and owing my own business to enjoy my passion, and at the same time be a responsible head of the household, became nothing but distant dreams. There are days of frustration, of fear, and of doubt, but through it all, I found a new strength in me. My journey to recover has been a testament in determination. With the support of my family and good friends, and a love and support from Stroke Support Group, I began to rebuild. I worked tirelessly on my rehabilitation, relearning what I thought I knew, starting with speech, movement, and confidence. Every small victory was a reminder that recovery is possible and that hope is powerful force, even though it's a day at a time and a step at a time. Those passions of hoping have been a guiding light through my recovery. I've learned to celebrate every step forward, no matter what, how small, and how to embrace the beauty of being unique. Being a mother has given me the greatest motivation. My children have shown me what the true strength look like, inspiring me to keep pushing forward and never give up. Their love and support have been my anchor. The strength and understanding keep me here today. Today, I stand before you guys, and just as someone, not just as someone who has faced a stroke, but as someone who has emerged stronger, who is a fighter and a warrior. I've discovered my passion deep in my appreciation for life, and I learned that it was determination and hope. We can overcome even most difficult challenges. Thank you all for listening to my story, and may remind us all, no matter what obstacle we face, we have inner strength to rise and heal and to thrive. You'll never know how strong you really are until being strong is the only way you are determined to fight. So whatever we are up against, please find our strength to keep fighting no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Park. Ms. Nicholson, would you like to add anything?
Thank you for asking.
Okay. All right. Thank you, friends.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to just applaud your courage and for being a voice. It's important for you to speak up and let others know your journey, so thank you for doing that. And I want to thank our Vice Mayor for bringing you here today, for bringing this inspirational story, because it is a story of inspiration and awareness. So thank you, Vice Mayor, for doing that for us. Have a good evening. Okay, next item.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on Consent Calendar Items and on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the clerk. Madam Mayor, I have no speaker cards this evening.
Okay. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar. All items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the City Council requests separate discussion.
Would any council member like to pull an item for separate discussion? I see none. May I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Okay. Councilmember Wu made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Chan, second in. Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Public hearing. Proposed citywide fee schedule for fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
I now open the public hearing. Finance Director Kaholo Kula will make the staff presentation. I'll get there. I did it correctly. Okay, great.
Madam Mayor, we actually have Assistant Finance Director Linda Tang.
After all that. Yeah, you could have just said Tang. It's a lot easier. I can do that one. He can present too. That's true, but anyway. I said the director, but that's okay. Ms. Tang, would you like to start with the staff presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Linda Tang, Assistant Finance Director for the City of San Gabriel. Tonight, we're presenting the proposed master fee schedule for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Any approved updates to the citywide fee schedule will be effective July 1 of 2025, and the citywide fee schedule document will be included as an appendix in our budget This slide provides a basic explanation of the various revenue categories that we have. At the top, we have the users and regulatory fees. User fees, they're fees charged for the use of public service or program. An example of that would be our recreations programs. The other items on this category is regulatory fees, that are fees charged for the regulatory activity of a public program, for instance, fire inspections or building permit. These fees charged are for services limited to cost recovery for this item. The next flat category that we have is fines and penalty. These are payments for the conviction of a misdemeanor or municipal infraction or violation. The fines amount for municipal code infractions are set by the city. An example of that can be our parking fines. To the right, you will see we have rent. These are fees for the use of public property, like our Mission Playhouse, as well as our various park facility. These fees are set by the city discretion. Staff is asking this for City Council approval on the adjustment to these three revenue categories that I just mentioned tonight after presenting the proposed changes. There are two other revenue categories for assessment and taxes that are not considered tonight, as generally they take votes, the votes for those who are impacted to implement. This slide presents some background information, as well as the approach to the fee adjustment for fiscal year 2025, 2026. The last formal fee and cost allocation study was completed in March of 2021. As a part of the adoption of the fee studies, the council passed a resolution to increase fees each year by Consumer Price Index in the Los Angeles area. The month that we use for consistency is January of each year, and January of 2025 for the Los Angeles area is a 3.3% increase. In preparation for this meeting, finance staff collaborated with affected department regarding their respective fees scheduled for the upcoming fiscal year, and based on the reviews, most fee adjustments are proposed to increase by the 3.3%, a CPI rounded to the nearest whole dollar. Then, there's also other fees adjustment proposed to better reflect the costs of the service or the staff assessment of a fair and marketable rate. But of course, there's also a fee that you may have seen in the document that have no Then I will also move on to some new fees that need to be added to the schedule to collect for the service provided. Based on the proposed adjustment for general fund revenue, it will be estimated to be an increase of $211,000 for general fund fees. First up on this slide, the new fee added to the proposed master fee schedule, street lending permits. Ordinance 718 was passed with a second reading in March of 2025. The ordinance required a permit in addition to a business license to operate. So the fee proposed here of $896 is a cost recovery for services that will be provided by our code enforcement, by our code enforcement division, planning division, police department, public works, as well as finance, as they require reviews, inspection, validation of the permits. To the right, you'll see the adult center, additional staff for supervision after 9:00 PM. This fee is proposed at $50 for nonprofit rental covering two staff. This fee is already an existing fee in a private events category, rental category. So now this is adding it to the rental category by nonprofit organizations, whether it's general or San Gabriel based. As late nights events require faster turnover for cleanup, to prepare the facility for next day events, next day classes, so for late nights, we need to acquire these two additional staff, supervision staff, sorry. To the bottom left is Mission Playhouse concession. And this is to be transparent that when an event is booked at the Mission Playhouse, our staff will operate the concession area during the event. So items sold may be, it may include beverage, soda, candy, snacks, and they vary between $2 to $4. So we're putting it on our fee schedule, just to be transparent that we do operate a concession stand. So the price, as I said, mentioned, proposed, as varies depending on items sold. And second, the second item right below it, there is an item on concession for employee discount of $1 off for each item. Moving on to the right, you'll see Mission Playhouse equipment. The mirror ball is added to our Mission Playhouse available equipment for rental. Added to our inventory, so it's proposed at $55 per week. Continuing on, this slide presents some additional new fees at the Mission for our Mission Playhouse staffing. First, we have the front of house staffing for reserved show. Reserved show, which are shows that have assigned seating, required a staffing level of 15 members to ensure the rental at the Mission Playhouse operates safely and efficiently throughout the entirety of the show. This will include box office staff, ushers, parking, and concession attendants. The fee is proposed at $30 per hour per staff member with a minimum four hour each. Second, we have the front of house staffing for unreserved show. Now, for unreserved shows, there are shows that have open unassigned seating. Therefore, fewer staff is required compared to the reserved shows. So for this category, there's seven staff members included, and it's needed to ensure everything operates as planned for the entirety of the show as well. And the fee again is proposed at $30 per hour per staff member at a minimum of four hour each. Next proposed fee is also for Mission Playhouse facility rental of ancillary space by city employee. It is being proposed to be at 60% of regular ancillary space rental. And when I, when ancillary space, we're talking about the Mission Playhouse lobby, it could be the classroom, the Mission patio, plaza, the front plaza, those are what we categorize as ancillary space. The last item on this chart here is for also facility rental of the theater by city employee, and it's being proposed to be at 80% of the regular theater rental fee. These are the new fees that we're proposing to be added to the citywide fee schedule. For impact, fiscal impact, based on the fiscal year 2025, 2026 forecasted revenue, a 3.3% increase to general fund-related revenue is estimated to generate approximately $211,000 in additional general fund revenue. Recommendation, after discussion, it is recommended that the City Council adopt Resolution 25-19 updating the master fee schedule for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Tang. Does any council member have factual questions for staff to clarify the report?
It's Mayor, I do.
Councilmember Wu.
Well, thank you, Linda, for the presentation. Just a quick question about, can you clarify how the projected 211,000 in additional general funds revenue from the 3.3% CPI adjustment that compare to prior years' increase? And is it sufficient to meet the rising service delivery costs, like we have a more, the higher cost to the labors and higher cost to electricity and everything?
Okay, so the way we come up with to calculate the 211,000, as you have seen already on the proposed budget, we have all of our general fund proposed revenue. The way we're calculating is basically take those proposed revenue for general fund account or budgeted revenue, add 3.3% on top of that. So because we have been keeping up with CPI for the last three, four years, since 2021 when we implemented the fee study, we're trying, hopefully, that, you know, that will, that hope to cover everything, but general recommendation is that the fee study needs to be done once every five years to, you know, reevaluate, because as, like you mentioned, there has been increase to staff costs, there's a number of items that have been increased over the years. We're hoping that this will cover, but again, you know, until we do a fee study and review everything and analyze to, at that time, we may have to make different, more adjustment in order to really bring everything up to speed. But for the last three, four years, we have been increasing by CPI and hoping that is like the general economy for CPI increase.
Thank you. And for the staffing, it's about the reserved show, 15 staff members, is that the maximum numbers that we will provide for each show, each reserved show?
As far as maximum number, this is when I was discussing with our Mission Playhouse. They're saying 15 should be sufficient. I would say certainly, I won't say that, it could be more, there could be additional staff, but the portions that are for these staffing is, they're thinking from experience, 15 staff would cover it for the reserved show for ushers, helping people find their seats, parking attendant concessions. So at this point, this definitely is thinking that should be sufficient. That's why that number is being proposed and is clearly stated on our fee schedule.
Got it. Well, thank you very much, Linda. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions before I get to public comment? Councilmember Herrera Avila?
Just two questions. Just want the general community to understand how we calculate the CPI. I know that it's been a practice that we calculate that at a target month, and I just wanted to see if you can explain that. I know that's, for that particular month, it's 3.3, and we're not just averaging everything out. We're just choosing one month, and wherever is at that month, that's what we're choosing. So I wanted to see if we can get somebody to explain that.
Okay, I'll try this, and if not, our Finance Director will, but certainly on the first year when we implemented the first CPI, from the time we started to discuss with all of our staff and start bringing the fee schedule meeting and all this stuff, we did use the January of that year to, in order to do the CPI. So be consistent regardless. We continue to use that January, like January CPI. Otherwise, we don't want to say, okay, if February looks more, we'll use February. March looks like it's higher, we'll use March. No, because the first year when we first implemented the CPI increase from the resolution, we already used the January month, therefore, we consistently use January to be year-to-year changes.
Interesting. How long have we been practicing that?
The, when we first implemented the fee study that was completed in March of 2021, we've implemented in for fiscal year 21, 22. So from then on, each year, we use the CPI, January CPI, to increase our fee schedule.
I think that's good to have that transparency, that we're being consistent.
We're being consistent, so it doesn't mean February looks like a better month or a higher month, we'll use that lower. No, we were basically from year to year from that point on.
And I'm assuming that the city is going to be consistent and keep doing the January, unless directed by councilor, right?
I believe that is the case.
Yeah. So then I also noticed that we have, we're providing discounts to the city employees, which I think is great. I just kind of want to understand how long we've been doing that. I mean, it's a great thing that we're offering discounted rates, like for the Mission Playhouse, so they can host any kind of events. And are they, is this something that they know? Is it a known thing that they could, they have these discounts? I'm sure it is. I just kind of want to get a little more of understanding.
Certainly, the discount as rental, it has been existing more on a community services side and not so much on our Mission Playhouse side. We, by reviewing the fee schedule, you will probably see a rental, again, there's Mission Playhouse and there's community services facility. So the discount has been in place for the rental, like parks or, you know, on the rental facility that taken care of by the community services. Mission Playhouse, not so much. Therefore, this is to be consistent, to make it available to our city employees on a Mission Playhouse, and this is the first time it's going on the fee schedule.
That's quite interesting. I mean, and I hope, and are we going to communicate that with them? Is it going to be an email? Or how are they going to know about this particular discount? I mean, it's a 20% discount that we're giving them. It's huge, you know, 20%. The Playhouse is very expensive.
Right. Certainly, I wasn't planning on advertising anything, but with this fee, with this fee adoption, I'm sure employees may maybe hearing it through the grapevines and through our city beats and everything. I'm pretty sure that they have received inquiry. I have no doubt that, you know, our facility is absolutely amazing, so I'm sure staff have asked about it. That's why this is brought about, and to be consistent across the board between our available rental facility, this is now brought to the fee schedule, just to put it formally on our fee schedule.
Yeah, for me, just, I'm big on communicating this information, not just putting it on this, so let's make sure that we do communicate. I'm sure, I trust you guys, that you guys will, and I think it's great. And one other thing, can I do a comment right now, or, I mean, it's kind of a question comment. So I'll just ask the question comment. So the City Council, from my understanding, we do not get these, even though we're quote-unquote kind of like city employees, we do not get these discounts, and that's, and that's great, because we don't want to look like we're benefiting from the city in this particular thing. It's just for the regular employees. And part-time employees too, or how does this work?
This is, as far as putting it on here, this is city employee. Part-time is city employee as well.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make that clear distinction, that this is, even though we're category, we get a stipend, a city officials, we're not going to be benefiting from this. So that's great. It's great that we're offering that. I just wanted to make that clear distinction, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that correct?
That's correct. I was actually going to bring that up, because I don't want anyone to think that we're getting any kind of extra benefits.
Exactly.
And I'd like Mark to kind of even elaborate one step further with regarding to recusing ourselves if some kind of vote takes place.
That's right. And actually, Martin would be able to jump in here and be even more intelligent about it, but anytime the council votes something onto a city process or policy, if it affects or gives a benefit to any of the council members, they would have to legally recuse themselves. They can't give themselves a benefit like that. So in this case, if we were to vote to allow council members to have a discount that the general public doesn't get, all five of you would have to recuse yourselves, and so we wouldn't be able to adopt it.
Thank you so much. Does that conclude your comments?
Yes, and I appreciate that, to add that extra caveat, just to be clear and transparent with everybody. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions before we go to public comment? I see none. I just wanted to make, just compliment you, Ms. Tang, on the fact that you're really highlighting the fiscal impact, because a lot of times as council members, we get so, we drill down into the weeds here, and we lose sight of fact that at overall, it's only $211,000. I mean, some of these fees look really high, but they're not in the overall scheme of things. And so I just want to really, I appreciate that upfront, this is what we're looking at, it's $211,000, it's not a million dollars. Sometimes, I think in the past, some council members have thought, oh my God, it's a million dollars, and it's only $211,000, and we're trying to recover the costs of operations. So thank you for that. Okay.
May I ask one more thing?
Clarifying question?
Clarifying. So this means I can rent the mirror ball for $55 a week, because that's regular price for everybody? All right. Just making sure.
The city attorney nodded, yes, you can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No public comment, Mayor.
Okay. I now close the public hearing. It's now time for council deliberation and discussion. Would anyone like to start, or would you like to move with a motion? If there's no further comments, we can just go directly to a motion.
I'd like to, if nobody has any more comments, I would just like to motion to approve.
Okay, we have a first, I need a second.
One more, if you're talking about City Council, but I also think about our commissioner, if they want the, because we're giving.
Well, that's a good question. Let me just second his.
Yeah, okay.
So we have a first and a second.
All right.
Let's get his answer, question answered. Well, I'm sorry, who do I look at? For commissioners. Do commissioners qualify for the discounts? It says paid employees, but it's a good question.
I would think that they would qualify for the discount, because they do not, are not making a decision or approving the discount for themselves. So being form of an employee, I think they would qualify.
So they would qualify for the discount, is what you're saying? Okay. I'm sorry, who are you looking at? Mark? Okay.
I think I would say that they, that council has the ability to allow commissioners to do it, because there's not a vote or anything like that that the commissioners are part of. So if council does want to allow this discount to commissioners, which I think is a good idea, they volunteer their time, and they're even, you know, less paid than the employees, and so it would be a nice gesture. But I just ask that we amend the motion and the second to specifically state that we're passing those discounts along to commissioners as well, so we can put that in the policy and it's clear for everybody moving forward.
Yeah. Just I add on the commission, yeah.
That's a very good point. We've never discussed that before. So we're going to amend the motion?
Yeah, okay.
So I'll have Herrera Avila amend it?
I mean, Councilmember Deng, a great point. I mean, we, the commissioners don't even get paid, and the fact that you brought this up, I mean, I will allow you to, can I pass the motion to Tony so he can amend it, or do I have to amend it?
Just amend it.
Okay, I would like to amend it to include the discounted price to the, I just don't want to take credit from Tony's idea. I mean, that's a great idea.
We'll remember. Okay, don't worry.
To include commissioners, if it's allowed, to benefit from this employee discount.
And then I'll second, I agree with the amendment. So is that all we need to do? Okay, well, let's vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Great. Next item, please.
We have no continued business. Next item is new business, comprehensive classification and compensation study report. Human Resources and Risk Management Director Macias will make the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm pleased to present tonight the citywide comprehensive classification and compensation Back in June of 2024, the staff, city contracted with MGT to conduct an in-depth, comprehensive study of the city's classification, compensation, and fringe benefit programs. The study really took into consideration and was divided into three main parts, that being the classification study, the compensation study, and the fringe benefit study, with fringe benefits, including other types of pays. And the objectives of the And the objectives of the study were to review and update the city's full-time position classification and compensation systems, and furthermore, to provide information about the city's marketing, market standing for compensation and fringe benefits. The comparator cities that we used for the study include Alhambra, Arcadia, Glendale, Monrovia, Montebello, Monterey Park, Pasadena, San Marino, South Pasadena, and West Covina. The reason why we use these cities is really twofold, mostly. Typically, these are the cities we use on a historical basis to do these types of comparisons and studies, citywide. And secondly, and I think most importantly, is that each of these cities have something very in common. They're all full-service cities. They all have police services, fire services, public works, community development, economic development, finance, just a full array of public services that we would expect. And most of these cities really are very similar to our city in size and scope. The general process for the classification study included MGT reviewing the city's 84 full-time job classifications, reviewing and, and receiving, and MGT received and reviewed over 80 employee job classification surveys. MGT also interviewed upwards of 44 employees and their immediate supervisors. And lastly, MGT made findings and recommendations for the city's job classification system based on the information that it gathered through this process. Some of the findings from the classification study found more than 85% of the city's full-time position classifications to be accurately classified and described, with no subsequent updates needed. Furthermore, the study found that three full-time position classifications to be inaccurately titled and recommend re-titling these positions to better reflect the current scope and duties of each position. Those positions include currently our senior code enforcement officer, recommend to be retitled to code enforcement supervisor. Permit center coordinator, recommend to be retitled to permit center technician. And then lastly, playhouse production coordinator, the recommendation is to retitle it to playhouse technical coordinator. More findings include, the consultant found that one full-time classification, fire division chief, to be outdated and needing revision, and recommend adopting a revised classification description for the position of fire division chief. That has been provided to staff under separate cover. And lastly, the study found that six active full-time positions currently lacked position classification descriptions, and the recommendation is to adopt newly created classification descriptions for these positions. And these positions include assistant director of community development, assistant director of community services, assistant director of public works, facility supervisor, JIS analyst, and stage manager. All of these positions, except for stage manager, have one thing in common, they were all very recently approved by the city. So this is really helping us get in front of and, and just really catch up on our position classifications, as these positions were, I believe, approved in the last fiscal year. And then last, the last recommendation or finding from the classification study is recommend adding two full-time position classifications to the city's current authorized list of full-time positions, to better meet staffing needs, both currently and probably in the future. And those positions recommendations are information technology analyst and property and evidence technician two. For the compensation study, the general process included MGT benchmarking 42 full-time job classifications, which effectively represent 50% of all of our full-time job classifications. The consultant then compared the benchmark positions to salaries, to the salaries for similar positions found throughout the comparator cities, and then made findings and recommendations for, for the benchmark positions, position salaries based on the data compiled. Some of the general findings and recommendations from the compensation study, let me first start by, with a couple of definitions. So market rate, that term is used a lot throughout the report, very important term. Market rate is defined as the midpoint median salary among comparator cities excluding San Gabriel. So for example, we use 10 comparator cities. When we find the midpoint, we are just using those 10 comparator cities. So we don't use San Gabriel to also inform the midpoint, and then we measure San Gabriel against that midpoint. And then scores that place plus or minus 5% of the market midpoint median, i.e. market rate, are considered at market. And then benchmarks, the definition for benchmarks, and you'll see this term a lot through the, throughout the report as well, benchmarks are positions that represent a cross-section of the job classification families, and, and inform how their job families perform in the marketplace for salary. So below is an example, using the position of planning manager as a benchmark. And you see planning manager right in the middle, the benchmark. That position in and of itself helps inform assistant community development director, of which there is a direct reporting relationship between planning manager and the assistant director's position. And conversely, planning manager helps inform senior planner, and that the pay grade within senior planner, which is pay grade P5, again, you have a direct reporting relationship, so that benchmark helps inform those two positions. It's also important to note that when we select the benchmarks, we're trying to select benchmarks that we have confidence that we will be able to find a comparator in our comparator cities. So for example, planning manager is a fairly common position within our comparator cities, so it is a very good benchmark for these types of studies. If we use assistant community development director as an example, highly unlikely that we would find that as a, as a comparator across all of our comparator cities. We're probably one of the few cities that actually has a position like that. So just kind of give you that example as to why, the rationale for picking some of these benchmarks. Some of the findings and recommendations from the compensation study, so 38%, 16 of the 42 benchmark position salaries are currently above market, meaning they place more than 5% above market rate for, for base salary, and at this time, no market adjustment is recommended. 33%, 14 of 42 of the benchmark position salaries are currently at market, meaning they place within plus or minus 5% of the market rate for base salary, and again, no market adjustment for these salaries are recommended at this time. If I can add just a little bit of clarification, when we talk about market adjustment, market adjustment really just based on the market, this doesn't mean that the city shouldn't consider some type of COLA or cost of living increase to maintain the marketplace for these positions that are either at market or above market. Okay, so we're just really talking about market adjustments and not COLAs. So further, further findings include, show that 26%, 11 of 42 benchmark positions are currently below market, meaning that they fall more than 5% below the market rate, and consideration should be given to adjusting these salaries to meet the current market rate. And then lastly, 2% or 1 of 42 benchmark positions could not be analyzed due to insufficient Table one really just summarizes the findings from the compensation study, and as you can see, for those, those 11 benchmark positions that fall below market, the range that they are below market is about 5 and 1/4%, upwards to about 16 and 8, and an eighth percent. So you kind of have a wide range there, and clearly a couple of outliers. And then it's, it's important to note, as, as table two shows, going back to the example of the benchmark positions, we have those 11 benchmark positions that currently fall below market, but those positions directly inform the positions listed in table two. So although these positions weren't benchmarked, we can reasonably extrapolate that there's some type of market adjustment needs to be made, to either maintain some type of internal equity or some type of market competitiveness with those positions, because they are directly linked to those benchmark positions. And the last part of the study included the fringe benefit study. The general process for this part of the study, MGT reviewed the city's various fringe benefit offerings, including other types of pays. MGT then surveyed the fringe benefits provided to similar employee groups throughout the comparator cities, and then MGT made findings and recommendations for the city's fringe benefit offerings based on the data it compiled through this process. Some of the findings and recommendations from this study, health benefit contributions for employees who claim family coverage currently fall approximately 23% below the current market rate, and consideration should be given to increasing the contribution for this employee cohort. Longevity pay for police officers with more than 10 years of service appears to be less than what, what is provided at some market comparators, and consideration should be given to adding another longevity step for this group. Longevity pay for police management also appears to be lacking in comparison to what is provided to similar employees at some market comparators, and consideration should be given to providing similar incentives to this group as well. More findings and recommendations include longevity pay for firefighters and fire management employees appears to be less than what is provided to similar employees at some market comparators, and consideration should be given to enhancing this incentive for these groups. Also, longevity pay for civilian employees appears to be lacking in comparison to what is provided to similar employees at some market comparators, and again, consideration should be given to providing similar incentives to this group. Also, differential pay for sworn and non-s sworn employees appears to be lacking in comparison to what is, is provided at, at some of our market comparators, and consideration could also be given to providing similar, similar incentives to these groups as well. Other findings, education, professional certification, professional development, well, and wellness, and our incentive pays for senior management positions, both for civilian and for sworn employees, appears to be lacking in comparison to what the market provides, and consideration should be given to providing similar incentives to these positions. Annual leave accruals for sworn police and general miscellaneous employees are found to fall between 5 and 19% below the current market rate, and consideration could also be given to adjusting this benefit for these two groups. And then lastly, the really study, and, and, and one of the really more important recommendations is that the city actually conduct an internal review of its fringe benefit offerings, to ensure that they are internally equitable, and also that they result in employee satisfaction, professional development, retention, and organizational succession. Any really robust benefit program, fringe benefit program incentives, your best incentives will actually meet all of those criteria. They will enhance employee satisfaction, they will lead to professional development, they will lead to retention, and they will actually help support the organizational succession as the organization turns over. But obviously, at the very least, we want all of our incentives to at least meet some of those criteria, if not all. But that, that really is a rule of thumb for, for some of the fringe benefits and incentives that we try to provide our employees. And then lastly, other considerations to take into consideration with this report, the study distinguishes and treats classification, compensation, and fringe benefits, including health and other fungible benefits separately, because these factors are fundamentally different. This study does not assess internal compression or equity within the city's current pay and fringe benefit systems. But again, the city should take these factors into consideration when making salary and benefit adjustments. And then lastly, the study does not attempt to rank in order of importance the different types of fringe benefits offered in the marketplace, because these types of benefits are weighed and treated differently by each comparator organization. We all have our priorities, and we really do weigh and value the different types of benefits and incentives differently across organizations. And then in conclusion, the study shows that some positions, position salaries are currently well below the market rate, and in need of significant market adjustments, while the salaries for most other positions are within or above the current market rate, and in need of a more general cost of living increase. The study shows that the city currently provides a fair offering of fringe benefits to each of its employee groups, but there are some areas where the city can't update or enhance its fringe benefits for all employees. And lastly, the study will help inform, the intention of the study was really to help inform labor negotiations and staff's, and staff's recommendations for negotiations. Furthermore, staff's recommendations will also be based on the city's most critical needs, and obviously, the affordability of such recommendations moving forward. And staff's recommendation, as stated in the staff report, is city council receive and file the report for informational purposes. With that, that concludes our, our presentation. I'd just like to thank the, the staff that actually really helped with this, this report. That would be my lamb, human resources manager, and obviously, the consultant, MGT. Thank you. And with that, I leave it open for questions.
Okay, before we start with the questions and the factual questions, I just would like our city attorney just to clarify what this report means, and just, I just want to make sure our discussions are within those boundaries, because we are in the middle of negotiations, so we do need to be.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, again, this is a receive and file, it's not an action item, and as council knows, and as pointed out in the, in the conclusions, we are in the process of negotiating with bargaining groups for the next contract. So if you have any specific technical questions or any questions pertaining to the content of it, feel free to ask those and receive answers. I would strongly advise you against deliberating or discussing your positions, because you will overlap into discussions that we've had in closed sessions, which are confidential and privileged.
With that, does any, anyone have factual questions for staff to clarify the report? Okay, Vice Mayor Chan?
Sure. Thank you, Edward, and thank you, MTG. In your presentation, page seven, just a clarifying question for me, when it says the report recommends adding two full-time position classifications, one for information technology analyst, and one for property and evidence technician level two, does that mean the recommendation is for us to hire two people in those specific roles? Or does it mean that we already have those two employees, but we just need to rejigger their, their title?
That's a great question. So it's not a recommendation to add two positions, two FTEs?
I see.
It's just a recommendation to add two classifications to our current classification schedule, for our option to use either in, currently or in the future. There was an, we did identify through, through the process that, you know, there is the possibility of, of reclassing employees into those two positions, or we can keep those two positions for future, for use in the future. It just, it wasn't definitive, but what was definitive, reclassification wasn't definitive, but was definitive that it would be beneficial for the city to add those two classifications for either use now or in the future.
Okay, so it's, just that we have space holders for those specific positions, not necessarily that we need somebody in a real body in those positions at the moment?
That is correct. It's just adding another option to our options. So for example, we started the study with 84 full-time position classifications.
Right.
We'll likely end the study with 86 full-time position classifications, but that does not add to our staffing level. We're currently staffed at authorized 204 authorized positions. When the study's over, we'll still have 204 authorized positions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other clarifying questions? Councilmember Wu?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Edward, thank you, Mike, and also Jessica. So on your page, on page 17, can you just a little bit more specific on the benchmarks or criterias were used to evaluate the city's current education and professional certifications incentive against market comparators?
So.
Yeah, what specific benchmark, I mean, you're talking about from here?
So we're talking about benchmark positions?
Mm-hmm.
And, and may.
The criterias.
The criteria for the benchmark positions?
Yes.
Really, the criteria comes down to an internal analysis of what we think would be a, a robust and, and confident benchmark that we can put out in the marketplace and confidently draw information from that benchmark. I think. I think, as I pointed out later in the presentation, there was one position that we couldn't find any comparators for.
2%.
That was a bad benchmark. That happens in these types of studies. It was such a unique position, and in retrospect, I really should have seen it differently when we originally started to review this and try to develop the benchmarks, because not all positions will find enough comparators where it gives you a confident result. And so, most of our benchmarks had more than six or seven comparators, which is a good amount, but a lot of our comparators actually had upwards of nine and some 10, which is a very good benchmark, because you can confidently say, okay, we're getting a lot of information to inform us. So really, it's, I don't want to say it's subjective, but it does come down to staff analysis with the consultant to figure out what are the most strategic benchmarks we can use, and how we can use them internally to measure all of our other positions.
Well, thank you. And just in case where the jobs title were recommended for change, that will be accepted. So how would the city manage internal and external communications to ensure the clarity during the transition from old title to new title?
It's just a recommendation. We don't have to actually adopt a new title. And to really manage that process, we would, we would sit down with the department and share the recommendation for the title changes. And typically, the best way to make those title changes is department being agreeable to it and understanding the reasons why the title change. And in fact, the department likely made the recommendation or made a request for title changes that are recommended here, so it won't be really a surprise to any department that these title changes are being requested. And then secondly, it's always nice if the positions are currently vacant, and you make the title change without anyone actually being affected within the position. That's not always the case, but sometimes that is the case.
So in our city, that we actually provide multi-language just on the business card, Spanish, Chinese, so would that be also, when you have a transition, change the title name, so it will be also changed accordingly, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further clarifying questions? Councilmember Ding?
Yeah, okay. For the job title, so for example, you have the three, found a three-position classification, senior code enforcement officer, so that's, we already have this kind title?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
So we currently have a senior code enforcement officer that, for all intents and purposes, is a supervisor.
Mm-hmm.
And it just makes more sense to retitle the position as supervisor, and it actually, the pay for the position is very competitive with actual super positions that are titled and classed as supervisor within that job family amongst our comparator cities. So it just makes sense to upgrade the title without affecting the pay. And it really does make the position more marketable for the city as well.
So that's my second question for the order, like title, you changed it, so we not really affected their salary?
Correct.
Okay.
Not affecting salary.
Category, not like some category going up or going down? No, right?
It's strictly just one title to the next, nothing else changes.
Okay, all right. And also, you have the, I think, five division chief, I saw it's same classification?
It is, and, is that your question?
Yeah, so why, the description, it's still qualified division chief, so I said I want to clarify.
That's a great, that's a great question. Well, there was no need identified to change the title, there was just a need identified to update the actual job description or specification, and that's what that is referring to. So it was really just updating the job description, but not the title.
Okay, oh, just description?
Correct.
The title that we already have?
Like the duties and responsibilities, things that they do.
Okay, okay.
Those were updated within the job classification.
All right, okay, thank you. And then you have six extra full-time position for the assistant director communication, community developer, and the rest of, that's still like existing, we have this kind of job?
That is correct.
But just, okay.
We're just getting caught up on creating the actual job classification descriptions for those positions.
Okay. It's not the salary effective, or still have the salary effective on that too?
So, great question. The salary for those positions was approved with the 2024-25 budget.
Hmm.
The report doesn't change the salary for those positions, other than the recommendations that were made.
Okay. And for the Eric, Vice Mayor, asking a question, these two titles, it's, doesn't mean we have the existing, the job yet, just for the future, if we hire or internal, we up like some employee qualify, then go to this position?
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to double check. Okay, thank you, Ed, and thank you, our consultant, Jessica.
Also, the mayor of Almonte, so I'll give you the both titles, but anyway, Council, Councilmember Herrera, and then I'll follow.
I was just gonna say, thank you, Councilman Ding, that you asked the questions I was about to ask next, so we're covered, thank you.
Great, okay, Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Yes, and kind of to piggyback on that, I understand that you're saying that, and that was a question that I had as well, that changing the name and classifications, being careful about the impact on if it's going to have a cost effect, right? And the only, and you basically said no, so that's good to know, but I kind of want to, I need help understanding what's over here, if you want to go to page five, the first one there, I'm trying to make a clear distinction between, because it might be very confusing, right? When you go from officer to supervisor, and I understand that there's that part where it says senior code enforcement officer to code enforcement supervisor. I think that's a, that we're dancing on a fine line there, because from the field that I used to work in, there's a clear difference between officer and somebody that manages people. So I mean, is the officer right now, is the senior code enforcement, is he managing other people or not? And as the coach, I mean, supervisor, it's just, I need that distinct, that distinction. If you can help me understand why this was selected, I mean, that's from all the different categories that were changed, that's the only one that really stands out because of that clear fine line between a senior officer and a actual supervisor.
That's a great question. So our current senior code enforcement officer supervises code enforcement officers. They have direct reports. And the position, again, is effectively a supervisor's position. The position evaluates employees, the position makes hiring recommendations, the position also makes dismissal recommendations, and the position does report to a manager, but it still is a supervisor. And really, it was mistitled and really should have been updated probably prior to this. And the compensation for our current senior code enforcement officer, if you look through the report, the compensation is highly competitive with other positions, like positions throughout the marketplace that are actually titled supervisor positions.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
That's good to know. And then the next question is that when we're adding those, like Vice Mayor mentioned about understanding if it's a full-time position, that we're actually creating a full-time position, but you said we're not really going to create a full-time position, we're just creating that title, is that right? Like a title, like a slot, a space holder, yeah? So if you can just elaborate, help me understand these two, I have one more question after this. These two positions, which departments are they going to be falling under?
Which two positions are we talking about, sir?
The information technology analyst and the property and evidence technician two on page seven.
So the information technology analyst currently is housed in our finance department, and the subdivision is the, our information technology division. So that's where that position would be located, if in fact, we filled that position. And then the evidence technician two is housed at the police department, it's what we consider our non sworn safety support employees, so they work at the police department. And that would just, again, add another option for staffing at the department without actually adding another FTE. And if I can, maybe if I can try to clarify that just a little bit more, as I mentioned earlier, before the study, the city had 84 full-time position classifications. Of those 84 full-time position classifications, maybe half of them actually have an employee in them. Some of them are just there as options for us to use in the future for staffing purposes.
Got it, understood. Is there already a property and evidence technician at all?
Yes, sir, there are two.
Two?
Have two.
And they're categorized as?
Currently, property and evidence technician.
Okay, and then we'll add two, which would be the next level up, or?
Just like a half step up, it's really not even a full step, it's really just, the two positions will overlap in a lot of ways.
Understood, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, any more clarifying questions? Okay, I just wanted to say, first of all, I'm very pleased that we've done the study. My understanding, it's been at least 10 years, but might even been, might even be the first time we've ever done a study like this, and I think it's so important to make sure that we're having the right titles, we have the right descriptions, that we're aligned with industry practices. There's just so much value here. I know it's a lot of work, it is, you know, it's expensive, but there is value to this, and so thank you for bringing this finally to our city, something that we should have done many, many years ago, or we should have done, period. We've never really done it, we haven't figured out when it's been done. Is that correct? We don't even have records?
I can't find evidence that it's been done.
Okay, well, great, well, hopefully, we can do this on a more regular basis, because I think it's important to be fair to our employees, and it's important for us to know where we stand also in comparison to other cities. But my question, my clarifying question, before I get to public comment, is what are the next steps? I mean, we, you know, aside from negotiations, just internally, is this something that you sit down with each director and you start evaluating some of the recommendations, they don't need to be accepted, but maybe some should be accepted, and so therefore, they need to come back to the council, especially if we're adding position, we're at 204. But I'm just, just really briefly, what are the next steps?
So the next steps really are to discuss this internally with staff, the departments in particular, just make sure we have an understanding of the recommendations, and just to make sure that they actually work for us. They are recommendations, but it doesn't mean that we have to adopt all of them.
And so if you do adopt, excuse me, if you do adopt, I understand with regards to bodies, if we're going to add bodies, we need to come back to council. But what about job descriptions? Because I've seen us approve job descriptions too, would that also come back to us?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay, just so everyone knows, this is not the, the end, there are many more chapters ahead, but it is great that we at least have started the first chapter, and it's just continuing on. So with that, city, Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No public comment, Mayor.
Okay, so it's now time for council discussion, or we can make a motion, but any further discussion?
I believe there's no motion, it's a receiving.
No motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got so excited. Okay, no mo.
See, I'm paying attention.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, thank you, Attorney. I know, I said it in the beginning too. Okay, well then, oh.
Yeah, so just, so the company will be do the further recommendation, or staff will be continue to like, because I saw the comprehensive, the study, we have 26%, it's below the market, 5%, so when you, so how, I just want to ask in the next step, how long you will be bring back this topic to us? It's really appreciate the staff and the consultant company do the good, great job, so it's a really transparency for the, for the, for our city of San Gabriel, right? Today, not talking about your city, sorry, okay, just the city of San Gabriel. So it's, yeah, that's my question, it's for the, what's the next step? Yeah.
So again, all of those things are subject to negotiations, and we'll resolve those issues as we deem appropriate through the negotiation process, and obviously, through the council, the council's authority. So really, those 26, the positions that currently are showing to be below market, we are discussing those internally, and also, that's, that will be resolved through our negotiations process. There really are no specific actions to be taken, or any specific things to be done regarding the report. It just informs us for our current negotiations, and not just current negotiations, but informs us moving forward as well.
Yeah, because, yeah, it's like, I like, really like the transparency, but one thing is you mentioned your negotiation, so this is factor already there, so you use the this factor to do the negotiation for the future contract?
Correct, current and future. And if I can make one clarification, again, they're recommendations, and ultimately, even if the recommendations show that a certain percentage of positions are below market, it all comes down to the affordability for the city. So we can be under mark, or we can be under market or below market, but if we can't afford to get to market, that's just the reality of it. I'm not saying that that's the case, I just, that's why it's just for informational purposes only. It just informs where we're at, and it informs our discussions as we have these discussions with our labor groups, and internally with council, and then internally with our departments.
Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
Mark, would you like to add something? Oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay, well, there's no further discussion, next item, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I think just.
I'm sorry, Ms. Encona, would you like to come up as MGT consultant?
Mayor, members of city council, staff, good evening. Just wanted to just share a little bit about our experience working with your city. All of your staff was absolutely wonderful to work with, including your HR team, they were very helpful throughout the process, anything that we needed. And even engaging with your employees, when we had to do the orientation sessions and the completion of surveys, they were very engaged, they were really excited about this study, and I believe we even interviewed over 40 employees, and everything was just so seamless. My team members all said, wow, you know, the employee, the employees at the city of San Gabriel are very polite, and very respectful, and very great to work with. So I just wanted to reiterate, we had a wonderful experience working with your city, and thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you for taking the time to say that, Ms. Encona. Okay, we are now done. Next item, please. Oh, is that me, city manager?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing? Okay, let's see, council comments and conference meeting reports, who would like to start? Vice Mayor?
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll try to make this quick. On May 7th, I attended an Asian American Heritage Month celebration at LAPD headquarters. I've never been to that building before, but it's very nice, it was well-attended, and there were some great, very knowledgeable people there. On May 10th, I attended the Pet Wellness Day at San Gabriel Mission Playhouse in the parking lot, hosted by our Assemblyman Fong. And also later, later that day, I attended San Gabriel Fire Service Day at our South Fire Station. The weather was hot, but both events were still very well attended. On the 12th, I attended my monthly Chinese-American Citizens Alliance Dinner Meeting in Rosemead. On the 13th, I attended the Taste of South Pasadena fundraiser, it's an annual fundraiser for their local Rotary Club. And a lot of cool restaurants down there, of course, not as good as ours. Got to push that plug, right? On the 16th, I attended another, another Asian American Heritage Month celebration, it was hosted by Southern California Edison in their city of Irwindale facility. On the 17th, I attended the annual San Gabriel Play Day at Vincent Lugo Park, and it was a celebration, celebrating the 60th anniversary of the La Laguna Playground at the park, and it was a lovely ceremony honoring Benjamin Dominguez, and he's the artist who designed the playground 60 years ago, so it was very nice. Also, on. Also, on that weekend, I attended Monrovia Days, which apparently is the annual carnival celebrating Monrovia's birthday. It was also a nice event. On the nineteenth, I attended San Gabriel Historicals, that was, what, yesterday? Day before? I think yesterday. Oh, the days all smushed together. On the nineteenth, yesterday, San Gabriel Historical Association Dinner at the Mission Playhouse. After a lovely dinner from Claros, we got to tour the, we got a tour of the playhouse. And no matter how many times I've been through that playhouse, I always learn something new, and it's always fun. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. Concludes my report, I yield.
Who would like to continue? Councilmember Wu, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ding.
All right, yeah, it's, uh, on the, after last meeting, I, it's May eighth, I have chance go to the, they call the fifty-plus, they have the hosting AAPI Heritage Month and the mental health awareness in our city, the Hilton. It's, I saw a lot of attending, it's a really good opportunity. It's mental health awareness, include AOE County, the Mental Health Division, to provide a lot of good information. And I really like, especially they have the performance for the kids, especially they have this kind of issue, but they have the good performance, so I, that's good encouragement, give it to them, care them, right? Okay. And then, it's May ten, it's a lot of, the May eleventh, it's Mother's Day, so the May ten, it's a lot of the Mother's Day event, included our, the Assemblymember Mike Fong, Pet Safety Awareness, and our city, their own event, it's Fire Service Day, it's, yeah, I both attended, it's especially Fire Service Day, I love, especially the kids, even the outside, living outside our city, they give to them, the kids, it's a really opportunity to learning safety and firefight, what they protect us. And I have the JCUA, the, they, before, they just only associate the Mother's Day, but this time, they call it Parents' Day. Like, they honor, not just for the mother, and for the father, too. And, and I have another called the District Four L Two, the Lions Club, mothers also honor some, the mother, for the good mother, to honor to them. Both organizations, it's really touch me, it's, it's the honor, like, the mother have mental health, the kids, it's really touch me, even they are, the younger mother, maybe she's forty, fifty, but for them, it's a really tough job to take care of their kids. It's a, say, we should be recognizing them and take, it's, take care of them. And, yeah, on the May twelve, I also attend another Mother's Day event, too. And the, oh, yeah, actually, Mother's Day, May eleventh, I have the, they have the event hosting in our city under the Hotel Sheraton, it's for the, the young kids, the model competition. It's really also helped the kids to have good performance, and give to them some confidence to learning some skill for the model. And on the seventeen, it's our San Gabriel, the Play Day. It's a really great, especially the Vincent Lugo Park, it's, I think, the, two years ago, right, we do the, actually, Assemblymember Mike Fong provided some fun to repainting the, all the La Laguna, that, yeah, it's really, this time, have an opportunity, everything that looks very new, and I see, compared with a couple of years ago, after a lot of the kids really play on this kind, it's really help for our community. So, yeah, I thanks the, also thank the community service that really do the good job for our community. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Who would like to? Councilmember Herrera Avala?
Sure. Okay, I was writing my notes here. Okay, so, just, I'll be, I have about five or six to report out. May tenth, of course, we all attended the Assemblymember Mike Fong's Pet Wellness Day, which was super hot, but despite that, we had a lot of people there with their pets, so that was really, pretty amazing. Also, briefly attended the Fire Service Day, and got to mingle with a few of the residents, and saw the fire department just out there, and it was probably like ninety, ninety-four degrees, and they were still out there, being part of the community. So, kudos to the fire department for putting yourself on the line, even to entertain the community. I can only imagine how it's like to be out and working on a call when it's that, that hot, so thank you. On May fifteen, I also attended the Spectrum Noticias National Launch Reception, where they're going, the Spectrum is going to have a twenty-four-seven Spanish-language national news network, that's going to be, it was launched out, so that's pretty good to make sure that our community is informed. On May sixteen, I had a, I missed out on the Delmar Tour, so I scheduled another Delmar Tour with Superintendent Simmons, so I got a chance to go out and see Delmar, and it was not what I imagined. You know, you drive down Delmar, and you think that this is, I don't know, like, it feels not, it doesn't feel like when I walked in, it was just completely different. It felt like a charter school, it felt like a private school for the students, and got a chance to speak to the students, and I was just at awe to see the level of programming that they, that they have at the school, engineering and building different game consoles, it was amazing. May seventeen, Restor Sure Vice Mayor Chan stepped it up, and he was our acting, I don't think he knows, but he was our acting mayor, basically, and—
I was there. Hopefully, I didn't mess up too much.
He was able to hold it down, and it was a very meaningful, impactful moment, a lot of tremendous work that went in. And I know that they mentioned also our Mayor Menchaca being involved in that, so just relaying that information. I know you know that, you were involved, and I was happy to hear that, and then Hilda Solis was involved, County Supervisor, and then Mike Fong, Securing Funding. And we had the pleasure of having our Senator Sasha Rene Perez there, honoring the Dominguez family and this playground, that's significant, it was just amazing. Los Angeles, I attended that same day, the Los Angeles International Send Business Wisdom Seminar, which I couldn't really understand most of it, but I felt that there was people very much engaged, and this was at the Sheraton, so I thought that was pretty cool. And the last thing that I will report out is that on May eighteen, I attended the WCAA Graduation Ceremony, along with my counterpart, Councilmember Ding, and that's the West Coast Association for Advancement, wait, that's not that, that's the, the West California Art Center, and that's on Pine Street, and it was just amazing to see the level of art that they have there. Another place that you walk in, and you don't think that we have these kind of institutes or education forums, and I know they've been very present as far as when they had the drawing contest for Bentley, and I got to see that, those, the art pieces again, and this remarkable people that are coming out of San Gabriel, it's just so inspiring, and I was touched. But that's all I have to report, and I yield back, thank you.
Councilmember Wu?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I would like, on May seventh, I made blood donations at the carpenters training facility in Waiters. It's very honored that I met Mayor Jessica Acornar there as well. I hope that will be encourage more people rolling up your sleeves and donate and save lives. On May tenth, that I also attended, had Wednesday Fire Service Day in JCUA event. This is very honor that the City of San Gabriel, as we have been invited to the World Master Games that hosted by the Taipei City and New Taipei City, and I would like to just make a really brief one, because I, I would like to have a mayor to make a complete presentation on this. But this time, it's so great that they have a title calling that we share the same sky as their theme. In one hundred and seven countries, athletes joined this event. We have an opportunity to meet the dignitaries and elected official from Korea, Japan, Germany, Philippines, even the New Jersey, Florida, North California, we have several cities, dignitaries also been invited, and including Australia, too. I think this is so grateful to see that our mayor is well, she really well-presented our city in front of those dignitaries, and to showcase the City of San Gabriel to the world. And that would be so good to see that so many people, they feel interested in visiting us in the future. And I think I would like to make that a little bit more completed next time, at next meeting. But I, I think that will conclude my tonight's report, thank you.
Thank you. Well, just kind of piggyback on that, we will have more. There were so many takeaways, meeting, obviously, all the countries that were listed, Canada, I'm not sure if you had mentioned Canada, too, but that's okay. But we also visited the facilities, we got to kind of exchange ideas, some that I've already shared, actually, with our City Manager, but we're hoping to come together and do a more formal presentation with some of the takeaways that we, we saw that really would help our city going forward, some ideas that we can do here, we actually, there was one, well, a couple, well, several, but the one that came to mind was our community garden. We don't have the space, they don't have the space either, but boy, have they made it work. And so, I'm going to leave that teaser there, I'm not going to say how they make it work, but we will bring that back. But it was a very, it was a great trip, we kept very busy. I want to give kudos to Councilmember Wu for really spearheading it, but also being a leader amongst all of us. He really is so gracious, and it just really, it just became a beautiful community of different countries, different languages, you know, we could not always understand, for example, I met the Korean contingency, and they had their translator, but there was something about the fact that even though we didn't understand each other, we were there for the right reasons. We were there because we want to collaborate. We are a global economy, and we need to work together. And so, I just felt that spirit. And regarding the master games, we, sports games, we didn't have a chance to actually visit a venue, we were there for the opening ceremony, but let me tell you about inspiring the way the sport, this particular sports game takes place. It takes place in different countries, it just happened to be in Taipei this time, in New Taipei, but you have to be at least thirty years old, and there's no age limit. So, and part of the opening ceremony, they honor the oldest athlete, and the oldest athlete was a hundred and four years old. And there he is, you know, showing what he does best, which is badminton, that's his sport. And then later down the road, I did get to see on YouTube, a woman who was doing track and field, she was eighty-eight years old. So, again, very inspiring, and I'm not saying we, we need to have those kind of sports for our hundred-and-four-year-olds, but, but it's just things for us to think about as the population is aging. We need to kind of think about, you know, rethinking about older Americans and, or older residents, and what more can we do to help our, our older community?
Pickleball.
Pickleball, yeah. Actually, was there pickleball? Because that was the other thing that was very unusual. No, you know, with the Olympics, you come in as a country. With the master games, you come in as the sport. So, they had aquatics, they had tug-of-war, they had some sports that you didn't even think about. They had life-saving aquatics, I think it was, it was called, so there was other kinds of sports that you would not see in the Olympics. And so, so that, too, I want to kind of bring forward, and, you know, our, we did have some Americans, but again, there was very few flags that were waved. It was just, you know, this love of the sport, and so, they came in based on the sport that they played. I did see a Kiwanis flag, which was really unusual, I'm not sure why the Kiwanis flag was there, but there was a Kiwanis flag. And there were some, some other flags, too, that we didn't recognize, but there were, yeah, Mongolia was there. And anyway, so, but more to come, and we want to be more organized, because there is so much there, but we'll make sure it's, we'll do a presentation, just as our staff does, much more succinct, it will be brief, but I think there are some great ideas that we would like to share with everyone. And let's see, the only thing, you know, there were some events that I, you know, Pet Wellness, of course, I attended that, I hope it becomes an annual event, I'm not sure, because I know it's Mike Fong, Assemblymember Mike Fong is the person who coordinated, but hopefully, that's something that will be brought back. And of course, our fire station, always a hit, and yes, it was, it was blazing out there, but everyone had fun, so, so thank you again to our fire crew for being there. But one thing I did want to just mention before I adjourn, is that, just a reminder to everyone that on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, across the street from ten to eleven at Plaza Park, we're going to be honoring our heroes at the San Gabriel, San Gabriel's Memorial Day Ceremony. This is a tribute that is presented in partnership with the San Gabriel Veterans Memorial Coalition. The ceremony will honor military veterans and those who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to the United States. The event will feature live music by the Jefferson Middle School Chamber Strings, and a performance of taps by a Gaberlino High School Trumpeteer. Right now, if you walk across the street, you will see there are two hundred American flags, that whole area, we've dubbed it Field of Heroes, and that will be open starting May nineteenth through May twenty-seventh, and it's a way for all of us to come together with the community to remember, reflect, and show gratitude. So, with that, I would like to adjourn, but tonight's meeting will be adjourned in memory of Juana Beatriz Gutierrez, mother of Beatriz Mojaro, Vice Chair of our Historical, Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission. Juana, a Boyle Heights political organizer, Spanish-speaking immigrant, and a mother of nine children, passed away at the age of ninety-three. She was a member of the Mothers of East LA, she was a fearless advocate for environmental justice. May she rest in peace. The next regular City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, June third, at six-thirty PM. The meeting is adjourned at seven, I mean, I'm sorry, eight oh five.